Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming to your city council. My name is Paul Blackburn. I'm the mayor. I'll call us to order for April 28. First, I'm going to remind us that as we gather today, we respectfully acknowledge that the land on which the city of Hood River sits is the ancestral home of indigenous peoples. This includes the Nez Perce, Umatilla, Warm Springs, Yakima, and other tribes who stewarded this land for generations. We recognize the lasting impact of colonialism and commit to working together for a more just and sustainable future. Let's all turn off our cell phone ringers, please. Then let's salute the flag.
This is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Abigail, do we have any, oh, agenda additions or corrections? As long as I'm asking, I'll ask.
No, we do not.
We do not. Okay. I will now recess briefly for the city council to hand the gavel figuratively to Chair Stapina of the Urban Renewal Agency.
Thank you, Mayor. Calling to order the Hood River Urban Renewal Agency meeting for April 28, 2025. Any agenda additions or corrections? Will?
There are none.
Okay. First thing on the agenda is business from the audience. Is there anybody that's signed up today to speak to the Urban Renewal Agency Board? And anybody online, Jen? Okay. Moving right along to the consent agenda. Any discussion about the consent agenda? If not, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
First by Grant.
All second.
Second by Gladys. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair of votes, aye. Passed the consent agenda. So, regular business items from Will, the initial qualified pool list projects update.
Thank you, Chair Stapina and members of the Urban Renewal Agency Board. I have a suite of projects to discuss with you tonight and to approve proposals that are in your packet. We last discussed these projects at your March 24 meeting, and they've also been reviewed and discussed at length in the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. So this is a number of projects spanning many districts. And all using our qualified pool list that the firms that we have pre-qualified last in early spring and late winter. And this really shows kind of the number of projects we can get done through this procurement strategy, which really creates, saves a ton of staff time, makes the whole process much more efficient. As long as we're doing these kind of small projects. So there are 10 projects here. I won't go into depth into any ones unless there's ones that you would like to delve deeper into. They're all following the descriptions that we discussed at the last meeting. I will just point out how your, your app feedback was incorporated into the proposals in your packet. One, we got feedback that we should look at all publicly owned land, not just city owned land for its applicability to support our next affordable housing project. And we made that change. So we will, that did not work. The scope was too expensive for any of our QPL projects. So I'm just going to take that on personally and kind of do a mile wide and inch deep, a level of analysis, kind of look at everything and pull together summaries of all the different publicly owned land. Bring those summaries kind of with that kind of really high level look at their characteristics back to the advisory committee and the board. And then we'll narrow down from there and do more in-depth analysis. But so there's no fiscal impact to that right now. We also received input that when we're doing the research on different affordable housing types to a traditional low income housing tax credit model that was used for Mariposa Village. When we're doing a research on what other housing types are out there as alternatives for our next project. Your act said that we should also look at what the city's appropriate role in development of those different housing types are. Essentially, does the city have the capability and the expertise and is our core competency to be involved in any of those other housing types? And so we added that as a criteria for consultants to look at. Two comments that we weren't able to accommodate is one, there was a comment that we were doing the Heights streetscape projects. We should just kind of beeline for the roundabout and skip the other ones and just get the roundabout in as soon as possible because that's really the point of no return. There really just wasn't budget to do that. It's such a large project that even a small bite of it would be very expensive. And we do have our adopted implementation schedule, which includes doing the enhanced crosswalks across 12th and also a bike connection on Taylor and going east-west. So did stick with, with the plan to, and having MIG do 30% drawings on those first two projects because they're small enough that we can, we can bite those off right now. Also, there was input that in the development fee calculator that were the public facing development fee calculator that it should try to estimate property tax impacts. And working with consultants, that's just too complex and too many variables to provide any reasonable calculator based calculation for folks on that, that what they're building, what it's going to mean to their next year's taxes. Yeah. So that's what we were and weren't able to accommodate from the advisory committee. They did review the scopes that you have in front of you and had unanimous support for this at their last meeting. With the exceptions that there was two developments between their meeting and our meeting. Got the quote for surveying work to support Heights project. I'd given your echo range of what that would cost of 40 to 50K. Came in at $40,800, so at the very lowest part of that. And I also didn't have a quote for an architectural firm to do renderings of what an affordable, what our missing middle housing code can produce versus our committal code for marketing materials. And that came in at $12,000. So that's incorporated in here and out too. So it's kind of those overviews. I'll pause for questions if you want to go more in depth or there's a suggested motion in your packet.
Thanks, Will. Any questions, Will? Grant?
Would the Heights streetscape plan around about scope change if we were successful with the inter jurisdictional transfer plan that we had proposed?
We'll accelerate it. Yeah. If we are successful in getting appropriations in the legislature, we'll certainly accelerate it. Without any, without any jurisdictional transfer payment for the ODOT, we really will have any line of, any immediate clear line of sight to that roundabout.
Assuming we are successful in that, then you would come back and we could add that to this list.
That would be big enough. I would need to do a separate solicitation, but yes, I would get on that. Okay.
And further questions for Will? But any of the projects or?
I've got a question about the development in calculator. I remember we talked about this idea before and it specifically says in here that it's for development fees for, I guess for, is it specific to developers or would it also be useful? Is it something that's going to be accessible to the pub, to the public or by the public? Or like just general home improvement kind of thing. So if they have questions about how, you know, if they add on a bathroom or deck or something, what their, what their costs are going to be for permits and those kinds of things.
Yeah, sorry. I do remember receiving that feedback and I did discuss that with the consultants. That's not going to be in this initial round. But it's going to be a flexible calculator that can be Excel based and given to staff. And so I will, I will commit to looking at, making it work for that purpose after we get it done.
Thank you.
Nothing further? And entertain a motion. Just a suggestive one in the packet.
I move to approve the proposed projects as presented and authorized out to execute the associated agreements.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair of votes, aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Will. It's really exciting to see all this kind of coming together finally and totally agree that this is a good way to organize the process, especially with all these different activities happening concurrently. Do you have an administrator update?
I do. I'll just stay up here for two quick notes. Let you know that Travis Dillard has resigned from the advisory committee and we have posted that vacancy. So that may, that leaves us with one current vacancy and the rest of the seats filled. So we'll be working to fill that. And as always, word of mouth and using your networks is always With the exceptions that there was two developments between their meeting and our meeting. Got the quote for surveying work to support Heights project. I'd given your act a range of what that would cost of 40 to 50K. Came in at $40,800, so at the very lowest part of that. And I also didn't have a quote for an architectural firm to do renderings of what an affordable, what our missing middle housing code can produce versus our commission code for marketing materials. And that came in at $12,000. So that's incorporated in here and out too. So it's kind of those overviews. I'll pause for questions if you want to go more in depth or there's a suggested motion in your packet.
Thanks, Will. Any questions, Will? Grant?
Would the Heights Streetscape Plan around about scope change if we were successful with the inter jurisdictional transfer plan that we had proposed?
We'll accelerate it. It, yeah. If we are successful in getting appropriations in the legislature, we'll certainly accelerate it. Without any, without any jurisdictional transfer payment for the ODOT, we really will have any line of, any immediate clear line of sight to that roundabout.
Assuming we are successful in that, then you would come back and we could add that to this list?
That would be big enough. I would need to do a separate solicitation, but yes, I would get on that. Okay.
And further questions for Will? But any of the projects or?
I've got a question about the development calculator. I remember we talked about this idea before and it specifically says in here that it's for development fees for, I guess for, is it specific to developers or would it also be useful? Is it something that's going to be accessible to the pub, to the public or by the public? Or like just general home improvement kind of thing? So if they have questions about how, you know, if they add on a bathroom or deck or something, what their, what their costs are going to be for permits and those kinds of things.
Yeah, sorry. I do remember receiving that feedback and I did discuss that with the consultants. That's not going to be in this initial round, but it's going to be a flexible calculator that can be Excel based and given to staff. And so I will, I will commit to looking at, making it work for that purpose after we get it done.
Thank you.
Nothing further? And entertain a motion. Just a suggested one in the packet.
I move to approve the proposed projects as presented and authorize staff to execute the associated agreements.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair of votes, aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Will. It's really exciting to see all this kind of coming together finally and totally agree that this is a good way to organize the process, especially with all these different activities happening concurrently. Do you have an administrator update?
I do. I'll just stay up here for two quick notes. Let you know that Travis Dillard has resigned from the advisory committee and we have posted that vacancy. So that may, that leaves us with one current vacancy and the rest of the seats filled. So we'll be working to fill that. And as always, word of mouth and using your networks is always appreciated. So that will just be open until filled. There's no deadline. And also let you know that I attended a presentation of the student group that is working on the Pacific to Belmont connection, bike ped connection and different alternatives and options there. They had a poster board presentation along with the rest of the teams at Portland State University. So I went there along with Jackie, our community engagement coordinator, and one of our UAC members made it down there too to look at their work. And it's great. They're looking at bridge, tech, bridge connection, pedestrian bike bridge. That way the road doesn't need to be widened and you don't have to deal with modifying the culvert and things like that. So I, they said that we're going to get an electronic version of that poster board, which is still work in progress. The meeting was to gather input and listen to questions. So, but I will send that out to the URA board and the advisory committee when I get that in electronic version. And I will pass along any comments that you have. And I think we're going to get a final version in about three or four weeks.
And just a quick question on that. So if, if there is something that, that they recommend, what would be the steps for us to incorporate that into the existing plan and see feasibility, price, all that stuff?
Yeah, I'll ask, I'll ask the folks at MIG who did the Heights Streetscape Plan. What their input is on what additional engineering and what the cost may be to kind of get that up to a level that would be able to be incorporated in. And we can also think about sort of a public engagement we want to have at that point too. So kind of looking for the final product and then thinking about these next steps. Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you kind of describe how specific would line up with them? Like that's a big bridge. Can you kind of just, how that work?
Specifically where the, where the Indian Creek Trail goes down and then where that kind of informal user path then comes back up. That would be the launch. Those would be the ingress egress points for like a bowed, kind of like a, like a bow, like bone arrow boat pedestrian bridge. That would cross out over the creek and then come back in, paralleling 12th Street. So it's, you know, our Heights Streetscape Plan basically stopped at Belmont and it didn't really think about the connection point, which is, you know, really important for, you know, the roughly one-fifth of the city that's south of Indian Creek. And so this would be a way for bike pads to go north, south. Yeah. Yep.
And currently that's proposed for like a shared use, you know, pedestrian cyclist path in current state, correct?
Right. I think the TSP includes a widening of the road. Yes, this would be an alternative.
Yeah. Awesome. Thanks, Will.
Thank you.
Anything from any agency member, specific to the agency, similar to council comments? Okay. Okay. Well, that's, that's all we have for urban renewal. I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting and pass the gavel back to Mayor Blackburn to reconvene City Council.
Thank you, Doug. Next, we have business from the audience. I think we have Lorraine Lyons. Did I say that right? Please come on up and tell us, tell us what's on your mind, Lorraine. There's this red circle that we want to be green. I think if you touch the white thing, it'll turn green. Yes.
Look at that. I thought I would be making comment after some discussion, so I'm caught a little off guard. But I just wanted to give some input about the idea of closing, possibly closing Oak to pedestrian, pedestrian traffic. Which I think is a wonderful idea for a number of reasons. I think it adds some allure to downtown that seems to have been lost with, to the waterfront. And I had met with Councilman Stapina yesterday and offer any coordination with the downtown businesses. If there was a committee formed, I'd be happy to help with that.
Thank you.
And just so you know, Lorraine, the process at this point is we're not going to now discuss this, but later in the meeting, it, it may or may not get a lot of, depending on the interest of counselors at the moment, or perhaps it will be further at, at a subsequent meeting. So it's, I apologize for the imprecision of that, but that's how it goes. Next, we have several presentations. Ann Harris, Juneteenth, back again. Hooray.
There we go. Hi, everyone. I'm Ann Harris and thank you, Mayor Paul and City Council for having me here to talk again about Juneteenth and Black in the Gorge. I just want to give a little history and update about Black in the Gorge. Black in the Gorge formed in 2021 to bring black and biracial and multiracial families and individuals together for cultural connection and support. We also, from the beginning, wanted to connect with our whole gorge community and offer opportunities for everyone to learn and celebrate black history and culture. This year, you may have noticed Black, Black History Month, Black in the Gorge was very active and collaborated with the Columbia Gorge Center for the Arts to offer a number of, of really cool activities and some entertainment and artwork. And that was really a special month for us, getting the word out even further about our, our little startup group that has, has grown and continues to grow. In fact, our scholarship fund that we launched a couple, I think maybe a couple of years ago. We are now vested officially so that the, and that scholarship is housed at the Gorge Community Foundation. So we should have to sit there in that account for a little while, but we should be able to begin distributing scholarship is in November of this year. And we are just really excited to offer and the third annual Juneteenth celebration for, to the gorge again. And hoping that to hold that at Jackson Park, hoping that you all will consider waiving the fees again because we are, though we have some grant money from the, a grant that the next door wrote, wrote us into. We are continuing to operate on a lean budget, though we're really excited to have a bit longer celebration this year. As it was kind of mentioned last year and others thought this would be a good idea. We will be holding that actually on the holiday of Juneteenth this year. So that will be Thursday, June 19th. We have a lineup of some really cool artists, musical artists from Portland, as well as a local African drummer. We'll have some kids drumming lessons, African dance. We have a community freedom choir that sang at Martin Luther King Day celebration and sang last year. They'll be back with local accompanied piano accompanists. So we're really excited and we're also would like to expand because we have, I think, four kind of music acts that will be performing. So we're going to, we'd like to start at 3:30 and go until 8:30. So we're hoping to start setting up at 10 and then be out of there and all cleaned up by 9:30. And that's what we're excited about this year. So questions?
No questions for me, but I just wanted to thank you for your leadership and for coming here to have this fee waived. I know that my peers and I would be happy to support these efforts and a couple of us have actually signed up and will be there in person. So thank you for coming today.
Wonderful. And if you'd like to sing, you don't have to be a, you know, professional choir member or anything. Okay, I'll put you on the list and let me know what the practice is. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for my colleagues, Abigail and I have been working on the refinement of our proclamation and fee waiver process. Because it's awkward when people come and presumptively going to say yes, but what if we had questions? Or so we're going to change things, how that gets done a little bit. This, I think, is actually the last one under the old system. But stay tuned for a newer system coming soon to a city council near you. Have a go.
Well said. Well, that's later on in the agenda, but I want to know that there's a motion in the packet.
For this, for this.
I move to approve their request to waive the 2025 permit free for the Juneteenth event at Jackson Park.
Moved by Paulson.
I'll second.
Second by Rivera. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair of votes, aye. Motion passes. Thanks again, Ann, for coming. FEMA.
It's Mayor, as you know, FEMA will be attending remotely. So I think we're trying to bring up, I think Marshall Rivers is the main person who will get the city recorder in a minute to get them off.
Good, good evening. I don't know if you can hear me. This is Dale Meck with FEMA Region 10.
I hear you, Dale. I do not yet see you, but I hear you, Dale.
It is not letting me turn on my video, according to your something.
Standby. We're going to do battle with the tech here.
Okay.
It's, it's for them to be able to do that. So I'm not sure why.
Our, our computer is telling us that you may, but it sounds like yours is telling you that you mayn't.
That is correct.
Well, okay.
If you can hear me well, I can go ahead, especially if you are able to see the slides. I am calling you from a bunker in Seattle. I have just at a, at a, at a high level, I want to apologize again to the city for all the, the challenges that we've been facing and how that has affected the city over the past couple of months. It has been a bit challenging to navigate all of the changes affecting our workforce, our workplace. And so we appreciate your patience, in particular, the flexibility of your staff, who have done a great job of kind of working with us to deliver. Are you able to see the PowerPoint deck that we provided?
Thank you for the kind words, Dale. I can only imagine the disruption on your end. We only bump against the federal government occasionally. You are in the federal government. So hang in there, buddy. We do not see the slides yet, but I have some competent people scurrying around. So give us just a moment.
Perfect.
Can he share the screen?
Can you share your screen? Well, except we can't even see him. I can't imagine, but just.
Well, let's, let's try it.
Let's try it.
What could go wrong? Let's see if this works.
Oh, something's happening. It's starting to happen. Yes. Flooding is the most costly. I got it.
Perfect. All right. What I'm going to do. Let's go to that and then we'll just see if we can make this work.
Carry on, please.
Okay. And I will try to make this brief. I do also have a meeting this evening with the City of Cascade Locks. And there's a fair amount of material here in the slides and I will let you peruse that in more detail, kind of as you would like. I'll hit the high points and then give you guys a couple of minutes for questions as you'd like. So as you probably know, FEMA has been working on a flood study update for Hood River County for some time now. And we've, we've taken our time getting it done. And partly that's the process working because we are responsive to local input where we can. But at a high level, we're going to talk through, you know, what goes into a flood study update and what resources are available and kind of where we are, what's happening next. Let's see. Perfect. Yeah. Flooding, as you know, is the most costly deadly natural hazard in the US. The thing that's different about it from a lot of other natural hazards is that it is actually relatively predictable. Engineers can look at the shape of a watershed. They can study the hydrology. They can build hydrologic models, hydraulic models, and we can actually predict, maybe not what's going to happen in any given year. But we can highlight risk. We can, we can understand statistically the likelihood of an event and we can make maps showing that risk. And that was true even back in the, the late 60s when Congress created the National Flood Insurance Program. The idea was, okay, let's map that risk. Let's provide that risk to local government and, and our own citizens. And then let's make insurance available in exchange for having local government enforce a flood plain management ordinance for those riskier areas. So most places in Oregon participate. In this case, all the counties, the state itself, and then most of the incorporated communities and several tribes as well. So unfortunately, the, the current maps for the city, as well as the rest of the county are from 1984. That means that the engineering analysis for that work predates that quite a bit. We can, we can do a lot better with today's technology and, and so that's, that's what we're doing now. We are trying to catch up. You can see here for the state, we still have some work to do. The areas in yellow, we're working on those kind of currently. Most of the blue areas have been updated and then we're, we still have some, some white spots left to go. The key here is that, you know, FEMA does the bulk of the work, but we work with the community to understand where there's interest. And, and to get feedback along the way. We've done some other investments in the county. I won't go into these, but basically a lot of foundational data, other hazard type products. The key that we want to talk about today is the flood study update. It is a partnership. It is a collective effort between the federal government, the state and the local folks. You know, FEMA gets the money out of Congress to do the engineering, to update the map, but we work closely with local government and, and individuals to make sure that that data is credible and reflective of kind of local, local realities, we'll say. So let's see if I can navigate here. All right. So the key things that are changing. We have a much better idea of the shape of the ground and fundamentally that is the main thing driving what the 1984 maps looked like versus what the new maps will look like is we just have a really good understanding of the shape of the ground. It's basically they fly a plane over it. They shoot a laser down at the ground and they can get a really good representation of the shape of the map or the shape of the ground. We also have more information about what events have occurred, meaning what big floods have we seen? And we can do a statistical analysis on that and figure out how much water we could expect in a big flood event. And then the, the technology for actually simulating the flow of water has gotten quite a bit better. So when we talk about risk for flood events, there's often a lot of statistics involved. And the way we kind of simplify it to represent it to the, you know, members of the public is if you had a 30-year mortgage on a, on a home, when we say the 1% annual chance event, that's a pretty high risk event. That's, that's what people will call the 100-year event. There's a one in four chance of that flood event occurring over the course of that mortgage. So when, when you put it in those terms, people suddenly are maybe a little less willing to roll the dice. We also map what's called the 0.2% annual chance event. That's the, the 500-year, you'll hear people call it. And for that one, there's a one in 20 chance of a flood over that 30-year period. So those are the main key risk levels that we will put on the, you know, the firm. Here's a, just a little screenshot of what the current firm looks like. You can see there's a, a little caption here that says zone A, and then there's a line, and then there's this dashed area. And it's a paper map and that's what FEMA provided to the community back in the day to regulate and inform local development. Not as, not super helpful. It was the best we could do at the time, but we can do a lot better now. Now there's obviously a digital product. There's elevations to work with. There's depths to work with. There's other information from the model. And if the community wants to change those results, they have the hydraulic model that they can work with engineer to use to guide long-term planning or mitigation strategies to reduce that risk. We've got a couple of viewers available that are online that people can use to kind of figure out where's FEMA updating what. We do different levels of study in some areas that are, you know, maybe further up in the hills where there's not as much development. We put less resources into those areas. In areas that are kind of in the urban areas, we typically would try to put more resources in, generally do a little bit more survey of the shape of the ground. How big are the culverts? How big are the bridges? Make sure the engineers are looking at those. We're tailoring our investment. That's all available online. Most people will not be super interested, but if that detail history is, is interested, like it's all there. But what we've really set up to help local folks understand, you know, what does this mean? How does this affect my property or where I live? We've got a story map up on a webpage. Staff have all the links to this and, and I can provide those. I think they're all in the PowerPoint as well. But it's got a, a long list of information. It's all in plain language. There's some videos you can click on it and get a feel for like, what is an engineer? How do they do a flood study? How does this affect my property? What do all these colors mean? Like it, it goes through and, and answers those questions in a way that people can see at their home, at their discretion. And then in addition to that, what we would prefer to do is a, you know, a, a public open house where FEMA shows up. We sit in a gymnasium and we answer questions directly. Our current reality is we just can't make that happen. And so like we did during COVID, we're offering a virtual open house. This will be next week. I'll provide a little bit more detail down below, but essentially all of these topics are identified in that open house and in that website. So people can figure out, okay, here's the area I'm interested in. In that open house and in that website, so people can figure out, okay, here's the area I'm interested in. What sort of information went into this study? How does this affect my insurance? How does this affect local flood play management? Who can I call to get more information? At a high level, those resources are available and so if you as city council get questions from people, they know there's a flood study going on, they want some help. Uh you can send them to these resources and that will help answer most of their questions. City staff and state, um state folks are also gonna be a great frontline support to help kind of. Give people real answers to their questions and then of course, um FEMA is around to help as well. After the, uh after that open house, which is, I'm just gonna skip to the end and then I'll come back to it. After that open house, which is next Tuesday. Uh May sixth, and that's gonna be a virtual meeting. After that period where we try to get people's questions answered, there'll be something called an appeal period. This is required by the, the NFIP. And essentially, we will put the maps out. They're online. People can see them, but if they think FEMA did it wrong, if they've got some technical data. You know, that shows, no FEMA, you didn't quite do it right. In this area, here's some information. This is how it should look. Like, I, I disagree. I want this to be changed. That's an appeal. They can submit that data. We will review it. We will make the necessary changes and then we will reissue. Um many people will submit something called a comment where they're like, I don't like the way this looks or. I've lived here for twenty years and I've never seen water in that area. Those are comments. We will still review them. We will still respond. Uh but they don't always necessarily justify a change to the maps. People can either submit those to FEMA directly, um but we encourage, and I think the, the city and the county have done a good job of, of creating resources for this. We encourage community to submit those comments to city staff so that the city has an awareness. Uh the county has an awareness, um and then to route those up to FEMA so we can process those. Timeline ahead, that virtual open house is next Tuesday. Uh my coworker Marshall and I will both be on that to, to answer questions. Anything that we can't answer. Live, we'll have to kind of have our staff and our consultants help fend off via email uh down the line. Um and then that start of the appeal period, it's ninety days long, that will probably be in July. After that, um probably around the early spring in twenty-six. FEMA will send a letter and it'll, it'll basically be this formal letter of final determination. That letter will say, hey, the, the maps are done. We've addressed all the comments. Um you have six months to adopt a new ordinance, adopting those new maps into your local flood play management code. Uh and then the maps go effective. Uh both the state and FEMA are available to support that process. Generally, we advise communities not to wait. Until that letter comes out, um cause it sometimes can take a while, especially in Oregon to update an ordinance, so it's usually good to get that planning process going early. Uh and then at this point, the earliest those maps would likely become effective, meaning you would use them in your local flood play management. Um would be in the fall of twenty-six. The PowerPoint will have all this contact information. Uh there's me. Uh Marshall is the current uh main point of contact. And then we've got a bunch of other folks. So that'll all be in the slides. I thi- I ran through that pretty quick. I wanted to respect your time and then see if you had questions uh for me today.
Thank you Dale. Counselor.
Thank you for being here today. I do have a couple of questions for you. Just about some of the content that you've presented. So it sounds like there are forty-five individuals or properties. That could be affected by these updates and that there have been letters that have gone out to those individuals. Can you help us understand of those forty-five individuals? How many responses have you received? As far as those who can attend next Tuesday?
That is a good question. I do not have uh the specifics on those forty-five. I wonder if anybody else with the city staff uh would have confirmations from folks. Think I saw, thanks Dustin.
Uh thank you counselor. Uh the, we have received no responses.
Thank you. Um so you're talking about a change. It takes folks some time to adjust to a change. Uh during the hour presentation, I'm assuming that that's only going to be in English. I don't know of the forty-five individuals if any of them. Uh are Spanish-speaking households. I do see that you have information available in English and in Spanish. But what are ways that FEMA is ensuring that those individuals who are English and Spanish speaking. Understand the flood map changes and the appeals process?
Great question and I will fully admit that um. Our ability to support at our kind of full strength has been challenged. Um we are, we're struggling to retain staff. Uh I'm, like I mentioned earlier, I'm calling you from the bunker because I can't tell the work. We do have, we, we, we were able to get the open house materials all in Spanish, so that is all available. Uh on the webpage, so the videos are there. Most people's questions should be answerable. Directly from that Spanish uh website, which has all of the content from the open house. In Spanish. The only thing that we will have to do is in the real-time call, if there are. Individuals who have specific questions in Spanish. My personal Spanish is not going to be good enough to answer their. Uh questions. So what we will need to do is identify that that is a need and then talk through how FEMA can respond to meet that need. But we will be not as well prepared for that live next Tuesday. To put it candidly.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the honesty and please continue to. Uh coordinate with our local staff who can support you all on finding the. Right organization that can ensure that this information is in plain language, Spanish to those individuals that could be affected. I have two more questions and then um if my peers have any other questions, is it possible that we can have some sort of report where it's summarizing? Some of the questions that folks are having or the overall attendance of the meeting that will take place on May sixth?
I assume that is possible and I think I'll put that in my action item list to coordinate with city staff on. Making sure that there's a kind of an outbrief note from the event of here's, here's how it went. Here's what we heard. Um with that, okay, great.
And my last question and then I'll make a comment is your letter of final determination. Is that also going to be available in English and in Spanish?
That letter is primarily to city. Uh official, it typically goes to the, I believe the, the chief executive officer of the, the city government, so I assume that would be uh mayor. That letter is typically sent in English. If there's a request though, please let me know, cause we can. My understanding is if there's ever a, a request, we can meet that request. We just need time.
Yes, please. Uh Hood River County, over forty percent of our uh those that live here. Have Spanish and that's from census data as their primary language and we know that that number is under-reported. So if that is a possibility, it sounds like there's plenty of time to make that happen. To ensure that the information is available in both languages, please.
I will log that request. I know the LFD letter is a more formal communication directly to. The executive officer of the city, so it's, it is not. I will say even the English version is not very approachable by a native English speaker. Uh it is a, it is a bureaucratic formal document. Um but I will make the request, cause I, I, I hear you and I will, I will get it in there.
Thank you. And then the last thing I guess for us is that my understanding, whatever changes do happen, that we are going to. Adopt an ordinance, but that that wouldn't happen until fall of twenty twenty-six?
Yes. Dustin, anything to add there?
Yeah, that is, that is correct counselor. Uh we would not, not until. Uh the final determination has been made, appeals have been considered, would we go through the local process to update our ordinance? Which is really, um it's a, it's an ordinance that adopts the maps by reference. It exists in the current code right now. So um it's, it's really about two sentences long.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's everything for me.
A quick question for you. The open house is next week on Tuesday, May sixth. Is there a time that this open house will be?
Yes, let me confirm the time for you.
That's six to seven on here.
Yes, that is correct.
Alright, and um we have a link that we can provide people, I'm sure. Just make sure the public's aware that and they can, they can access it. Uh those are my, those are my only things. Thanks.
As I contemplate this, it seems like the really uh. Anxiety-producing part of this would be, all of a sudden, the place where I live, where I've invested, you know, my home. Is on the map. And uh I, you referenced the, you know, federal backup flood insurance. Coverage that you can have, but that's gotta be terrifying for folks. Um the second one, of course, is when I'm going to buy another house, then I could look and know better whether there is or isn't. But you know, an increased flood risk, but uh is. I think of flood insurance as being for like Florida, no offense, um but, but, but for. I- is there data about the, the homeowner experience once you're on the map?
It's a good question and I, I don't, I can only comment from kind of my own.
You got very quiet Dale suddenly, sorry.
I can only comment from my own personal experience. Um I've got, I've got a little example here just to show you. This is Indian Creek. This came up earlier in your. Uh discussion. Uh I wanna show what the original maps looked like, so that's, we digitized them. That blue line was the best that we could do in the eighties.
We don't see, we don't see, uh we still have the risk map team uh table. We don't see a map yet.
Hold on one sec. Yeah. This is one of the sites that's available online.
Yep.
Um and I've got the flood planes up. Can you see those?
Yes, and the color is in it.
This is the effective map, so we've digitized these, right? And you can see it's pretty blocky and doesn't even necessarily follow the creek super well. This is what, this is what FEMA made available in the eighties. So we digitize that and then we've got this toggle, so you can go back and forth. Between the old maps and the new maps. And so, what I would say is, yes, as an individual, it can be somewhat alarming to be like, wait, hold on a second. FEMA's changing the maps. I thought I was good. I thought my home was out and now I'm in. But the opposite is also true. People who may be paying flood insurance or maybe, maybe don't need to, or maybe could, could have a um. Uh a different risk tolerance for that. So the, the results in this location are now quite a bit more reasonable. And you can see that most of the college buildings are now well out of what we would call the special flood hazard area. Over the, the extent of the city, the results for the updated flood study are not super impactful. There are not a huge number of structures going, changing, right? From one zone to another or in or out. That's not to diminish any individual's personal experience. Um but at the city scale, the, the results here, like you said, this is not a Florida situation, right? This is not a, the whole city is in the floodplain sort of eh environment. Um you have some known drainages. We've helped bring some definition to where the flood risk is on those drainages. Um and all this is, is available on the, on the site. The other thing I'll point out, uh one thing real quick is that we also have something other than like blue with lines, right? Like, let's just, let's just pick a spot. Um you know, now there's an elevation associated with this line, but if you and I were standing there, four hundred and fifty-three feet wouldn't mean a whole lot to us. But we also have what's called flood risk products. And right now, this just gives you the annual percent chance, but there's other layers in there where people can say, hey, I actually wanna see how deep the water would be. And that's a different number. When you zoom into that same area. Let me turn off the water surface elevations. Now you've got depths. So now if you and I are standing there, this suddenly means something to us. We're like, oh. At that one percent annual chance event, we're talking about three to six feet of water at this particular location. Like, great, I don't. Really want to put any of my own personal resources into that location. I wanna build further up the hill. Um so it's, it's different ways of looking at the data to help make it more intuitive and, and more relevant to local decision-making.
That was a very helpful illustration. Thank you Dale. Other questions, counselors? Looks like we're, we're happy about the information that has been provided. Uh what's, remind me, the next step to we approve for?
Uh Mayor, I don't think you have an action. I think the next step is just um for FEMA to hold their open house.
Good, and if you can, you know. Since you're the federal government person, I'm talking to you. Run that up the chain that says like, you know, in person, way better. Just saying that.
I, you're, yep. Preaching to the choir. Thank you. Really appreciate the opportunity.
We're gonna move on to our audit. Is that correct, Abigail? Tara, do we get to have you?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Will everyone see me and hear me, okay?
Yes, great, thanks.
Alright, good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. Thank you very much for having me here this evening. My name is Tara Camp and I'm a partner with Clear Trail CBAs. And I was formerly with Polly Rogers, but we're in a new venture this year. And I'm here to present the results of the June thirty, two thousand twenty-four financial statement audit for the city of Hood River. So what I'll go over today is the governing body letter and that is a nice letter that summarizes everything we're required to communicate with you. And that is included in your packet. So on page one, we cover the purpose of the audit and the purpose for the city is twofold. We perform the financial statement audit and that is where we're testing and assessing those financial statement numbers to determine if they're fairly stated. Secondly, we perform a compliance audit that is required of all Oregon governments called the Oregon Municipal Audit Law Minimum Standards. And that is where we're looking at various laws and regulations to ensure compliance with those laws and regulations. On page two of the letter, we go over the results of the audit. For the financial statement audit, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean opinion with no reservations. That is an excellent result and exactly what you're going for. For state minimum standards, we found no exceptions or issues requiring comment except as noted on page ninety-five of the report. And I believe we noted a budget over expenditure. And then as part of the audit, we issued a separate management letter. Um detailing two items that we considered to be material weaknesses for the audit and those are related to accounting errors. Further down in the letter, we report that we had no difficulties in dealing with management and performing and completing our audit. Um we really enjoy working with Chris and Carrie and the entire finance team, so I wanna thank everyone at the city. They do an excellent job. They're highly professional in their work and um it's a ton of work. Going through an audit, so they did a really good job. Thank you for that. On the next page, we noted that we do not have any disagreements with management. And that would be over accounting or auditing issues that came up. And then lastly, on the last couple pages, we always summarize new pronouncements coming out that the city. Finance office should be aware of because those can um definitely take time to implement and we'll work with the city to ensure they have all the information they need. To do that before the next audit. So overall, very good results and I'm happy to take questions if you have them.
Thank you Tara. First of all, I'll say congratulations to Steph. Rave review, a clean audit is something to be very proud of and uh good job, good job our side. Uh questions for our auditor? Thanks.
Thank you. I echo the mayor sentiment. Good job, staff. There were two material weaknesses that were found in the report and my question is, what sort of. Internal changes will happen to ensure that these um material weaknesses don't happen in the next audit?
Yes, so as um, as part of the audit process, uh and actually it's just on the March twenty-fourth council, you may not have, have been there. Um so uh we have uh prepared and filed a plan of action letter. Um so the plan of action letter outlines the two material weaknesses that were found. Um both related, well, one related to a revenue recognition. Um project date, it's supposed to when revenue was received, uh and so we put it in the wrong fiscal year. That was corrected. Um the other was related to uh a change in accounting standards as it relates to um in uh information technology subscriptions. Um we've had some difficulty over the last couple of years implementing it. It's, it's uh, it's complicated. And so uh, and so um that was a weakness on our just incorporate those standards. Um so in both cases, one is um not to be repeated, the other has been corrected for the next fiscal year. So and that, and that plan of action gets filed with Secretary of State.
Anything else? Sorry, Abigail, do we approve this? All right. Thank you for your good work, Tara. It's, I was chairing the Housing Authority Board this morning, and there's some really confusing thing that we were doing about lending money versus giving money. It's like, you know what? I've talked to Steph about this. This is the way it works. It seems so funny that we pay you to look at our thing, like there is a conflict there, but you know, this is how we all seem to do it. So thanks for being our person, and thanks for your good work, and see you next time.
Yeah, I want to say thank you very much as well. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Uh, finally, we have the Charles Young part, National Hazard Mitigation Plan. Thanks for being here, Charles. Touch the white rim.
Yes, perfect. Um, so, uh, City Council, thank you so much for having me back. I really do appreciate it. Um, we are up to the point now where we're wanting to adopt the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. I thought I might do a very quick overview. I know our board D T is in November, but I'm going to just talk very briefly about the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. It is one of the foundational documents for emergency management. It talks to what the natural hazards that our area is subject to, and what we can do in order to mitigate some of, some of the risks from those hazards. Um, there is a specific city of Hood River Annex, which you'll find on approximately page three hundred and fifty of your second packet, so I really do appreciate you reading all of that. Uh, the, the section that we're asking for you to approve is just that City Hood River Annex. So that's what the, the, the resolution is about. One of the other pieces that I did want to mention is that our landscape for doing mitigation work is changing by the day. When I spoke to you in November, we were talking about doing a big, uh, Community Wildfire Defense Grant Ask. Um, we were not able to do that because the funding for that changed midstream. So we made an application for a much smaller Community Wildfire Defense Grant, which doesn't include a lot of the work around Indian Creek that I talked quite a lot about. Um, we since have made an application to an AmeriCorps program to try and bring some folks in to help us in that area. Um, and AmeriCorps also seems to be having some issues at the moment with the federal government. So at the moment, I can't tell you what we're likely to be able to do, particularly in, in the natural hazard mitigation area. Which is an uncomfortable situation for all of us, and I really do appreciate that you are really on the, on the, on the firing line of some really significant natural hazards without a lot of support to be able to deal with those. So do be aware, please, that I'm doing everything that I can, and we will continue to investigate ways that we can help to prepare the community against these natural hazards. Um, I also do want to recognize the really good work of your local conveners and steering committee members, which is Dustin Nielsen, Don Shelley, Leonard Daniel, Kevin Lebedee, Jacob Hana, and Aaron Mason, who did some grand work on the annex. So with that, um, do you have any questions about either the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Community Wildlife Protection Plan, the Annex, or anything else?
How's the funding catastrophe looking like for wildfires this summer?
I can't talk a lot to the response part. I do know that we are down about ten percent of our complex incident management teams. So we, last year, we had forty-four. I think the plan is to have forty across the nation. Um, we used, obviously, we used a number of complex incident management teams last year on the Whiskin Creek Microwave Fires Complex. Those overhead teams are enormously well-trained, very large teams that deal with very large incidents. Over the, the twenty twenty-four poll in the year, we were running at, in, uh, full capacity for those teams, so those were all engaged. The year before, uh, we were running at full engagement for only a very small part of the year. So we don't really understand, you know, it's unpredictable how much those are, are needed. I think you, my, my impression from the Forest Service, from O D F, from O S F M, is that they are working really hard to identify local resources that they can call on. And really, I think the difficulty is going to be in backfill. So if, um, if firefighters move from their local area, who comes in to help out? So I, I think it's going to be complex. Um, I'm hoping for not a terrible fire season, which is always the, the hope, and I, yeah, I don't have a lot more information than that.
Great, thank you. Others?
I'd say there's a lot of really fascinating data in here. The kind of work to do.
Yeah, we've been working on it for about eighteen months, thereabouts. So pleased to be getting to this part. Uh, I'd be even more pleased if we could, you know, find some money to do more of the implementation. But I think, we, we have an opportunity to really engage the community in some of this work. And I think that's where we'll end up, is, is doing a lot of community-based work.
Well, with that being said, that was one of my questions is how are you going to, or what's the plan to engage community members in this work?
Yeah, so when we, we pivoted a little bit after the C W D G, so Community Wildfire Defense Grant, funding changed, and we moved much more to a grassroots sort of campaign. The idea was to create, um, community groups such as the Friends of the Indian Creek, the Friends of, et cetera. I'm not entirely sure how we're going to find the capacity to be able to support those sorts of grassroots campaigns. But that's, that's really where we're going to be focusing our efforts. Um, but unfortunately, I don't have a plan at the moment because I don't understand what the funding landscape is going to be.
Thank you for that. You know, I remember during the Eagle Creek Fire and some of the other fires that took place prior to that, that there wasn't information that was available in Spanish, and I know that I personally volunteered time to go on the radio to let folks know here, here where all your resources at, because that material didn't exist. So as you think about engaging the community, ensuring that information is available in plain language, simplified, more pictures rather than their words, but that it's also available in other languages reflective of our community.
Absolutely, and we've been working really hard with the scrap group, that it may be a group that you're aware of, um, which allows us to not only pre template messages in, in plain English, but also pre translate. And so we have all of those templates preloaded into our information systems. Because much like many people around here, my Spanish is not good enough to be able to, you know, do that work.
Thank you so much for all the hard work put into this, and I recall our, our discussion back in November, and just learning tremendous amount. So I appreciate that, and appreciate staff's time on us. Um, is this something that's made aware to our representatives in Congress and Washington, et cetera, about the results of this? You know, what's, what's being done here? Perhaps this is a conversation for, or a question for staff as well, but who, who sees, you know, sort of the impact? And so the things that we're talking about, you know, I just start thinking about, you know, there's not a whole lot of time to manage something on our own without, you know, funding that we used to rely on, resources that we used to rely on. So is there something that you know, is being seen at the senator level, you know, et cetera?
We, we have shared this with Senate staff. But more generally, we use excerpts out of the Naturalizer Mitigation Plan for any grant application, for any documentation where we're we're trying to educate, um, the, about the needs in the community. And that's why I ridicule the N H M P as one of the foundational documents, because it, it collects a lot of those data that we're going to be using for press releases for the, the preface for the Ambulance Service Area document. You know, we, we copy and paste this data, um, which is why we update it every five years, because we want it to be accurate, and when there is federal funding available, it's a requirement. Um, I do also want to point out that one of the interesting sort of subdocuments, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, um, is one that there is no requirement to update. Um, and so by, by feeding that into the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, we will be running that on a five-year update cycle as well. Because as we know, the wildfire ecosystem changes very rapidly. But without attaching it to some other document, it's a document that will lag because there isn't a requirement to update it. Um, and so by including in the N H M P, we'll be continuing to look at the, you know, the high-risk wildfire areas within the county and specifically within all the subjurisdictions, such as the city, the ports, et cetera. Thank you.
Sounds like we covered it. Thank you, Charles.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, there is a, a contested motion on page thirty of the document.
Thank you. I move we adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash ten for the Hood River County National Hazard Mitigation Plan and the City of Hood River at downtown.
Moved by Paulson.
Second.
Second by subpoena. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote. Chair, vote motion passes. We have no public hearings. Consent agenda.
I move to be adopt the consent agenda. Written.
Moved by subpoena. Second by Calvary. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote. Chair, vote motion passes. Discussion, advocate.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here tonight to talk about summer. It's not that far away. Uh, but one of the items that you talked about in December, and it made it on your priority list for the next few years, was to investigate um, making downtown pedestrian-friendly and, um, and possibly closing a street. So you have before you a couple of factors that I thought, um, which should be considered and like some feedback on today. Um, I would note that the version of the packet that went out included an extra um, sentence that should have been struck that said something to the extent of, I think it was like just closing half of a street. Um, upon further review, Public Works did not suggest that as a good recommendation. So um, if we're looking at closing a block, we'd close the whole block, not allow traffic to go on one of the street. The other item that was missing on the, um, on the memo was, uh, the fiscal impact should, and I don't have exact numbers depending on uh, the feedback you give us, but the fiscal impact would include lost revenue from parking meters, small but notable. So those are the two corrections I needed to introduce to you before you had this conversation. So that's the extent of my presentation. Now I'm just looking for feedback on the items I've listed, plus anything else.
Anybody want to bravely wade in first? Go ahead, class.
Uh, I just want to thank staff for their efforts and some of the engagement that has happened already, such as the Downtown Business Association. I do want us all to think about this as a pilot, and that there is a lot we will learn this year that we can make changes for next year. One of those being, could we change it to somewhere else in Hood River? That's not just downtown. We and that we've done this before, right? We have First Fridays that are available, where we do close the street. There were some comments that came through in email around concerns around traffic, and this is something that the city has done for many years. With this being a pilot, that there will also be other ways that we're also looking to engage some of our community members that might not be a part of the Downtown Business Association, or, you know, Visit Hood River, for example, for their thoughts and opinions and the overall buy-in. And that's all for me.
Thanks, and thanks for bringing this. Uh, I know there's a lot of things that are on our work plan. I'm glad we're getting to this, you know, and yeah, it's coming towards summer, so we have to make some decisions, but yeah, I mean, personally, I think, you know, Counselor Paulson and I started discussing this sort of idea all the way back when we were running for office, just about, you know, having public space downtown, First Fridays, but you know, not just making this for necessarily tourism promotion, just for everybody in town here. You know, certainly, there's been a lot of activity that's increased down at the waterfront, and there, there's a lot of, you know, open space that's down there, uh, for people to congregate. Uh, want to be able to, you know, take the, you know, the idea that we've seen other cities do, uh, both semi-permanently and permanently, uh, to, to really make downtown a place where people can gather, uh, and, and gather safely, right? Uh, a lot of our goals in transportation around cycling and pedestrian friendliness, I think this would be a nice thing for people to just be able to gather downtown. It would allow the businesses to, to spill out into the streets somewhat, and, and, you know, I, as, as I envision things like programming, you know, I had some conversations with, with Rod and Lorraine from Sixty-four Tab House who are here tonight. Uh, they've taken a lot of actions to, you know, do, take advantage of the programs like the Parklet Program. They have bans at, uh, uh, you know, First Friday events, uh, and, and I, I just foresee, you know, with the engagement of other businesses down there, the opportunity to do more of that. Uh, certainly would be good for the businesses, would be good for just the overall feel. Um, and had a, you know, short discussion with Abigail about this, about how vital programming really is. You just can't close the street and say, all right, come on down, right? So, um, I would propose that we form some sort of committee uh, that would include council, that would include the Downtown Business Association, Visit Hood River, or other stakeholders from the community, community groups, uh, just to ensure that we, you know, receive maximum participation from, from locals. I, I would also recommend that, you know, we, we continue to look at other cities, you know, for example, you know, cities like Boulder have walking streets. Uh, cities like Walla Walla have had, um, you know, through COVID and, uh, events like that, the, the opportunity to say, hey, maybe we should do more of this. And, you know, I think it's worth noting, sort of impetus for like getting, you know, talking about this now, was once we closed down Second Note for signalization, you know, there were some parking disruptions and whatnot. Um, a lot of people came to me and said, it was really nice just being able to walk downtown and, and not have to worry about crossing the street and just kind of looking and seeing different, different perspectives. I could look at the buildings better and all these sorts of things. This is definitely the, speaks to the livability of the community. Um, and then finally, you know, in, in regards to parking, you know, I envision, you know, working with key stakeholders like CAT to be able to identify, are there ways to do, you know, increased routes that, that go from, you know, um, larger parking areas like the event site, or down by the ruins, or wherever it might be for people that might, may not be able to walk up the hills to get to, to, to that area. And, and I would suggest, you know, certainly that this would be on Oak Street. I'd like to look at Second, Third, perhaps, you know, all the way up to Fourth. And if we were going to do anything that would include all the way up to First, not ever think about closing down, you know, uh, Second, you know, we would still be able to retain the pedestrian walk, uh, you know, walkway, uh, signalization there and all that, maybe have barriers on each side, but yeah, I, I think we, I think this needs to be measured and, and you know, not just say, let's close all downtown for all, all the summer, like on day one, but we also don't need to stick it on Third Street or something like that for a block that, that doesn't make much sense. So I think, I think we need to be measured, but also have to be uh, do something that's effective. And I think, I think the one thing that we should think about in terms of when we do this and how long the pilot might be, would be contingent on, you know, speaking with stakeholders about what programming could look like. Um, you know, and speaking with, with Rod and Lorraine from Sixty-four, you know, they, they thought they could get things going, you know, as early as July, you know, if other people felt that way as well, that we could, you know, we could offer some extended powers, we could have, you know, um, you know, racks of clothes or whatever it might be, uh, you know, wine tasting boards to, to be able to go back inside, you know, what, what people can envision to do that, um, to be able to contribute versus the First Fridays, which are really, you know, more curated and you know, we have, we have specific events and anybody can kind of participate. I would envision, you know, the, the people that are driving this sort of programming being from the, the businesses themselves versus the city. You know, perhaps the city role on that isn't, you know, providing tables and chairs and that sort of thing, but the city's role is to provide a consistent program where if they can have tables and chairs that they bring out to the street and they can, you know, uh, see this is something that's, you know, done programmatically every Saturday from twelve, from, from ten to ten, or whatever it might be. I think that'd be great. For those businesses to be able to do that and have more outside seating. It might reduce the need for things like parklets in, in the future and all that kind of stuff, too. So um, yeah, a bunch of thoughts there, but yeah, I think this is a really awesome program and uh, don't want to boil the ocean on the first iteration, but you know, I also don't want it to be too small.
That was way too loud to put my pen down. Sorry about that. As mentioned, Doug and I sort of chatted about this informally before we were elected.
I agree with Laura, what Doug said. In terms of scope, and I'll throw a scope out there. Um, I agree with Doug that we are generally looking, I, I think that we're looking at somewhere in between First and, and Fourth. I don't know.
and Fourth. I don't know if necessarily our scopes are the same. I'd be fine with putting or doing a block, maybe two in between either First and Second or Second and Third. I don't know if we want, as a pilot project, I don't know if we want to extend it too large because it is a pilot test project and we don't necessarily want to go too big unless we know what the results. We won't, we won't know what the good results of the experiment are until we actually do the experiment. So I don't necessarily want to overextend ourselves. The concern I have with going in between Second and Third is that is a main vehicle traffic route because they come down Oak and then take the left to go down Second or vice versa. So the debate that we may have is do we want to do that and traffic, traffic will flow around that? Or do we want to go in between First and Second, which is less trafficked and make that more of the pedestrian test area? I agree with Doug that doing it in the summer in July, August will be great. Kids are out of school. They can cruise down and hang out in that area. Weekends, July and August makes sense in my mind. Shutting the block down in between Friday evening and opening it up again Monday morning. I wouldn't want to do too many open and closes turns because that puts undue stress on city staff. It makes, makes the experiment expensive if we're opening and closing it every day in the morning and then opening or closing in the morning, opening it back up again at night. So if we shut down Friday evening, open it back up Monday morning before everybody's back to work generally, Monday morning, it'd be great. Regarding amenities, I again, don't necessarily want to overextend. It's out kind of in the sun. If we can do some programmatic things, as counselors to be mentioned, great. Need maybe a little bit of seating, a little bit of shade. A few places for people to park their bikes, as we've seen a lot on First Fridays, a lot of people will bike down and attach their bikes to every single vertical pre-standing object in downtown. So those were my thoughts as far as scope. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anna, and then Ben.
I want to thank Councillors to Peanut for your input. I think that that makes a lot of sense. I think the key is going to be consistency and communication. Communication with the business owners and communication with our community so they know when this pilot program will occur and you know, and to make it a success is we need to make sure that there's a lot of people that are participating. I think that, you know, Grant, you mentioned too, the kids and making this kind of a friendly place for kids to participate in the summer. The kids are in front of Mike's Ice Cream and hanging out in front of, in Georgina Park. So I think that, you know, if you have a closed down area of downtown, you know, between First and Second is great and there's good, good businesses there, but I don't think that there's, I mean, there's not much for, I don't know, like I would think about where our families go. Where do people, our people go here? And I think a lot of people go to Sixty-four. I think a lot of people go to a lot of the businesses that are, I think this is where the, the idea of forming a committee and getting input from the businesses and from Visit Hood River is going to be really key because we need to hear from the folks that are running these businesses to get their input on what that is. Because we all have some ideas of what might be good. But I think downtown makes sense. I think being consistent and having good, clear communication is good and having having the committee is going to be important. And I had one other thought about Second Street. I think that it would be really challenging to close down Oak between, you know, including First through whatever. If you, I like the idea of like, you know, maybe just First to Second, but I don't think we can block that intersection entirely because that is the main, like we can't cut, shut down Oak Street between the intersection of Second because everybody's getting to the waterfront from there. That's the main ingress, egress to the highway and the waterfront. So I kind of think if this is going to work, it's going to probably be Second Street West to like Sixth or so. I think that's kind of a lot, but like probably right up past past Mike's. So those are my thoughts.
I'm just going to cut in here that we've heard a number of street names and numbers and Abigail, what, what is the scope of First Friday closure?
I think it goes to First to Fifth.
First to Fifth. So the Second and Oak, I agree. It's like, that is closed on First Friday. Second and Oak is closed on First Friday, just reminding ourselves of that.
Right. And that is coordinated with ODOT.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that closing multiple streets is even in the cards because under staff recommended, which I know we're council, we can make changes. But to be respectful of staff, you know, under staff recommendations in here, it says, well, first, it mentions that an intersection, you know, for this pilot, pilot program should not require a closure. So that would be limiting it to a block if we are going to follow staff recommendation. And two, it also mentions that for this year, closure should be twelve hours or less. So that would, you know, preclude closing it for an entire weekend. Is another recommendation. Also, I know that we've been, you know, largely talking about, you know, like Oak Street or, you know, Main Streets like that, but I don't know if it's worth discussing, like how about potentially a side street as opposed to Oak Street to start? Like I understand why obviously doing Oak Street, like that's what happens during First Friday. It's the main drag. It's kind of like, it's Hood River's, you know, Main Street, but you know, just throwing that idea out there as well. Then you don't have to worry about so much.
Paint me that a little bit more, Ben. Like what, what street are you imagining?
Like, for example, I don't know. Let's say like Fourth or Third or something like that in between like Cascade and Oak or something like that. I know topography changes there. Side streets are a little bit steeper than Main Streets, but just since we're kind of brainstorming here a little bit, just throwing that curveball in there.
Yeah, thank you. Close. And then Amanda.
Um, yeah, I did think about the side street thing too, but I also think like if we're doing this as a pilot project, we should give it its best chance to be six or like kind of just, you know, maybe push the limits a little bit to get a gauge and not just be like, oh, we're closing the side street where there doesn't really, there's not much businesses and there's a steep hill. And if we get a picnic table, like it's going to be tilty and, you know, things like that. So I also just kind of want to keep that in mind. You know, I I definitely respect like the one block thing. I think that maybe it's good enough for the first year or my thoughts. I don't know if it would be too much if we could like change the block every week or so we could try different blocks and then everybody kind of, so we're not just like favoring one block every time. And then we kind of get a feel for what works better, different places. And yeah, definitely I would want to have public places for people to sit so they didn't feel like they had to be patronizing a business to sit down. Shade depending on, I guess, yeah, the building shadow, like natural shade options and what's directly in the sun. Love the programming stuff. Like I think that's super important too, but and then to kind of, yeah, build like a central stage or something where people could just be in the streets and not out of business to do that. Yeah, because it's like, you know, you want to kind of benefit the whole downtown. So like, how is it just being in one place? I don't know. And this is for, I think a committee is a great idea because obviously like we are not the only ones here. So maybe that's, you know, stuff for them to work on and figure out, but yeah, just how do you incorporate other businesses downtown, even if they're not on that block? How do, how do they get in? Those are my initial thoughts.
Yeah, I was just going to say a lot of what Counselor Geeky mentioned, appreciate the idea of a committee recognizing that Jackie's going to take off to have a baby here soon. And that means that staff capacity is going to shorten a little bit. So we do need to leverage our businesses in addition to other partners who could support with the marketing, who can support with what are other services that might not be a business, such as a health service that can come down and offer whatever services they have available to folks, music, entertainment, all of those pieces, which streets are the best to close and that that should involve a lot of our community organizations and businesses. And hopefully that can help Abigail and the rest of staff out. So it's not just solely city staff supporting these efforts moving forward.
The thought that just occurred to me, and then I'll keep going down the line, is I think I'm a little bit more in the mode of, I think the city should almost like solicit a suggestion from the chamber, say, we're interested in doing this. Please tell us what you think we should do. Like this is not a city thing. This is a chamber thing in my view. So that, you know, Visit Hood River is very tuned into working with the businesses, the members of Visit Hood River, and they know their business and they know their businesses. And so anyway, was it Doug?
Oh, please. Yeah.
Anna. And then Doug.
Um, I don't know if this is on or off. Oh, okay. I have a quick question for Abigail. I'd like a little context for why staff is recommending just one block. And then the other thought I had was kind of inspired by your comments, Mayor, was, you know, if we're collaborating and you're two Gladys of, we're collaborating and partnering with other entities. Is this something that could be maybe overlapped with the farmer's market on Saturdays and farmer market, farmer's market gets moved up to Oak Street and we have, and that way we have parking again. Because that's the big issue is where, where are people going to park if we have this shut down?
Thank you, Counselor. I think the question of why staff recommended one block was simply to leave the cross-traffic available. And on First Friday, when we have closed everything, you know, we've got staff at many intersections just to really to monitor and explain to drivers how else you can get around downtown and and those things. So if this is a, something that's going to be set up and basically unmanned or unstaffed, at least by city staff, not having folks to intercept drivers and explain to them how they can get around was, was the thought. Now you could have two blocks, but then leave the intersection open. Now that might be, that creates, could create a difficulty for pedestrians who think they're going to walk right down the middle of the street and drivers might not be looking for them. So those were the two factors that went into the one block.
And I think regarding, you know, the, what, what you said about, you know, speaking to the chamber, et cetera. So I think so far, there's been some outrage to like the Downtown Business Association. Didn't get a whole lot of feedback. And I think that's because it's where it's been so far has been, hey, we're thinking about doing this thing.
Exactly right.
At a certain time, not sure when or how long it's going to be or what blocks it's going to be. So I think by giving Abigail some clear direction about like, these are maybe some of the options we want. We're thinking about maybe a block or two. We don't want to close down Second. Maybe we would have Second closed here and here to incorporate First, but like Second, it still would be running dissimilar to First Fridays. You know, the kinds of things, you know, that are listed out here about programming and duration and, you know, all this. If we have that to bring to Visit Hood River, to the Downtown Business Association, to other stakeholders, they'll have more of a vision of what we're talking about versus right now. It's just kind of like, we're just starting the conversation. What does everybody think? Right? So they want to focus the conversation a little bit more.
Amanda.
Um, I was wondering, as we were talking about, like the duration, right? And you had put in there like the twelve-hour thing. But to me, it also makes more sense to do it for, if we're going to do it multiple days in a row, and just do it once. Is there a reason why you said twelve hours or?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Really, it was the thought about accessing for delivery vehicles and, you know, the, like if you block it, you know, a loading zone is not available. So having things that could come, you know, things get overnight. Also, the garbage trucks, right? Go on some areas of Oak. They don't go on everything, but just, it was really about truck access. So if we have barriers that are easy to move and then, you know, the garbage truck driver gets out, moves the barrier, puts it back or staff, you know, replace the barriers in the morning. Just know that, you know, if it's 24 hours, I'm not going to be staffing it that whole time.
Right. And then is that as much of a concern on the weekends or is that more like do the garbage trucks run mostly in the week?
Yeah, that's the point. I think weekdays, right. The garbage company, I think, does during the week for the downtown, if we're specifically talking about Oak Street. I assume that businesses get deliveries every day, but of course I don't know that for sure.
Yeah. And I think that needs predictability. If it's just Saturdays in July, August, from hours of 10 to 10, then I think then we would be able to gather that type of feedback about, you know, are there, are there delivery considerations? You know, I mean, there's a lot of parts of the world that do this sort of thing all the time and the infrastructure is not great. You know, it's some posts that come up and they can be put back down and locked down. All the terraces in European cities, like the businesses bring in the chairs or they lock up the chairs so that all, everything can be, you know, cleaned in those areas and there's public access before those businesses open. So though it's a little bit different, you know, here, I think there are, you know, again, I mentioned Boulder earlier, some cities that do this kind of thing on a more permanent basis, but rather not, not have the city coordinate something very, you know, coordinated directly by the city, but giving, you know, the community, giving the business associations a chance to be able to do this, this, take this and run with it, right? Giving them the support by closing down the streets, by ensuring there's trash receptacles and everything, but not having the city run this kind of thing. Yeah, I mean, I just heard, you know, the idea about like the farmer's market, for example, like some of those sorts of things that could be incorporated. And I mentioned it earlier too, you know, CAT, I think would be an instrumental partner here to be able to understand, you know, can we move people around? But I definitely could envision, you know, a Visit Hood River ad that says something about, yeah, Hood River has, you know, streets closed down in the summer. Come park your car down to the event site. There's a trolley that runs or whatever that kind of thing would be. And that would definitely, you know, be appealing for visitors, but certainly want to also be able to conversely do it and say, we have something that comes down from the heights so that everybody that lives here in the community can do that as well, right? So I think that's an instrumental partner to be able to understand. You know, what, could this be done? And if there are not that many parking spaces, you know, those are gone. How do we mitigate that, that entire aspect of it? I thought the farmer's market was a really creative way to do that.
Thank you, Counselor. You know, I think that's why starting off with this being a pilot and that we're going to learn a lot and that we will do even better next year. So community members, businesses, please give us grace as we continue to do this. Another point that Doug brought up that I thought was important and that we don't have to get too sophisticated by key performance indicators, but how do we know that we've been successful? And how is this brought back to council at an agenda later in the year so that we understand what worked well, what didn't, and do we want to do something different for our next year? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I don't know if you guys saw it in the news this week, but the guy who owns the brand of the Fire Festival, which was an epic fail, got out of jail, went to re-stage it, and this week decided, yeah, I'm going to quit and resell the brand. So let us be modest in our endeavor. Let us try something a little bit and not over, like some Saturdays in July and August, to me is like, oh, that's a lot. Like maybe July, maybe. Do we still not have parking charges on Sundays? Is this true?
That's correct.
So that like takes my answer. It's like, oh, Sundays, like we already have said it's free to park on Sundays. That's quite a different thing than Saturday's paying like, really? Like, do we want to?
And I think that's something that could definitely be like, if we had a committee and some people to say like, what would it look like for Sundays for you? What would it look like for Saturdays for you? That kind of stuff. And if it's like, oh, Sundays would be way better or, you know, or the opposite. I think that's the kind of what we want.
So I don't want to presume, but do we have members of this council who would be willing to serve on said committee? Amanda.
It depends on the day.
So we could, there will be, we will be at that meeting.
Great.
Great. Anything else on this? I mean, this is super interesting and intriguing to visioneer it. And I lived in Fort Collins, Colorado once, which had permanent walkable area that felt very successful to me when I was there. And it's just interesting to imagine the differences and the similarities and yeah, all right. Oh, Amanda, go ahead.
I just want to reiterate that this is not only for, like, I think when I hear we're working with Visit Hood River, like that kind of makes me like, oh, it's for tourism or whatever.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate that this is like for the residents of Hood River to come downtown and enjoy and do that.
Yes, thank you, Amanda.
To that point, I'd also like to just get feedback from people about whether they want this at all. You know, like, we all think it's a good idea and I personally love First Friday, but there's probably going to be some people who are annoyed about a change in the traffic pattern and the fact that, you know, we all know how challenging it is to drive through town in the summer and this is, you know, And this is, you know, adding to it. So just would also want to have, you know, feedback from local residents about, I know we're going to try this pilot program, but, you know, if they even think it's a, a good idea at all. So, but I'm definitely on board.
I thought, Lorraine, your comment was very valuable, specifically mentioning the waterfront versus the downtown. What's, what are the attractions? What's the vibe? And, and, and I appreciate you're highlighting that as one of the things on, on your mind as we're, as we're organizing things like, right, let's make sure that it addresses these kinds of issues. Grant?
Echoing their comments, yes, change is hard. That's why this is an experiment, to try it out, to see how it works, to adjust if needed, to see how well it goes. If we don't try it, we don't learn nothing. And the other thing about it, oh, what was it?
You can, you can chime in later when it comes back.
No, oh, no, I remember what it was. Back, back, back before we had the signal at Second Oak, but right before it got constructed, before we shut it down, before we shut down from Third to First and State to Cascade, I was, I was on council and talked with the other councillors and said, hey, other councillors, pay attention to when we shut down these, this entire set of four blocks. See, pay attention to what the people are saying. There's three of us who weren't here at the time. But pay attention to what the people are saying and pay attention to what the community is saying about this, because this is the opportunity to see what it's like. This is sort of the experiment and test to see what it's like when this area is pedestrianized. And we heard, we heard at the time that people really appreciated it and wanted that sort of experience in that area. And so this pilot project is a reflection or a continuation of that desire that we heard at that time. So.
All I was saying in terms of making that comment is that we've all been like, yeah, 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 we're doing this, this is good. And it's like, be open to the fact that, you know, I want to get a broad sample of the community if we can throughout this to, to make sure that we are doing something that, you know, people want, which I assume we are, but don't want to be myopic about it is all that I'm, all that I brought that up for.
I appreciate that you bring that up, Ben, because we did receive public comment from one local resident that just said that they, they're concerned about the impacts on traffic on ancillary streets. So I, I echo what you say as well, Ben, of like, yeah, please talk to us. Let us know what your thoughts are, pro or con, because that's, it's our job is to hear from you.
And I appreciate you mentioning that as well. So maybe one of the deliverables, Abigail, I'm happy to be voluntold. As these events do happen to have one of us onsite connecting with community members. What are your overall thoughts? What could we do better? What do you feel is missing? What are the challenges in that we're the ones who are gathering that information similar to what we do with some of our First Friday surveys that take place? So that we can get that community input for the next run.
And, yeah, and to Ben's comment, and I think that the reason that we're doing this is because this does align with a lot of our goals, right? So one being, you know, the sort of idea of transportation, open space, all these sorts of things. There's a lot of, a lot of our main six goals that we can kind of tie this to. I think, you know, there, there's going to be those in the community, you know, I heard somebody the other day that was complaining, I had to park on the next block over from the store that I wanted to go to. So there are definitely going to be detractors of any changes. We, we've heard a lot from members of the community, they're not really happy about the, the Heights Streetscape plan and what's happening there because they're not going to be able to fly through the Heights anymore, getting, you know, and those that live in that community are, are very, very hip to the idea of having cycle traffic and all that kind of stuff. So what I would envision is, you know, for us to mitigate the, the disruption as much as possible is, is work with, with, you know, again, the Columbia Area Transit, work with, you know, you know, cycle advocates like Megan Rainey to be able to understand how is, how is it going to be easier for people to cycle there? You know, understanding how people can walk from certain locations, making sure we free up parking lots and, and all these things we were talking about. So I, I think it's, you know, it's our responsibility to try to mitigate all that, but also there's, there's going to be people that are upset, upset no matter what we do, in regards to that.
As I've become increasingly somewhat of a caretaker for my mother as she ages, you know, the idea of ableism is very much on my mind, that she doesn't love it when they close the downtown because then the restaurant she loves to go to is like 20 times as far of a walk, which is not good for her. So. All right, moving on, hey? City recorder, I think we have nothing, Jen? You're right there, Megan. Abigail, city manager comments.
That's right. Well, first of all, thank you all for, for that feedback and for your willingness to be part of the planning process and to connect with stakeholders as we plan something for downtown. We anticipate that the downtown ramps will be done by mid-July, so that's also in my mind as a factor of not wanting to impact downtown in a way that might be adverse because they've already had a really hard spring. So, but we do anticipate those will be done in the next couple, or sorry, those will be done before Memorial Day. July would be Cascade, or the Cascade area, so. Yes. Sorry to everyone, to whom I just gave a heart attack. They're supposed to be done by Memorial Day downtown, so. So I appreciate, you know, not starting that, that immediately and just thinking about downtown. So I will reach out to those of you who are willing to be voluntold, as Consular Rivera said. So I just two, well, three quick items for you under city manager comments. The first is we're coming up, as I said this morning on the radio, budget season, everybody's favorite season. So I just wanted to confirm you had these in your calendar. May 7th, these are all Wednesdays, May 7th at 6:00 PM. May 14th at 6:00 PM. And then May 21st, 6:00 PM for urban renewal. And then the city part cannot start any earlier than 7:00 PM because we noticed that. So we want to make sure that, you know, we notify people. So we can't start earlier than 7:00 because that's when we've told them that would start. So that meeting, you know, we'll have a 6 o'clock for urban renewal. If we finish early, we'll just have to take a break and then reconvene at 7:00 PM. So each day starts at 6:00, but on the 21st, it's a little different because you're doing both urban renewal and city pieces.
And it was going to be the 30th because we're all old hands, we didn't need the 30th of April.
That's right. Yeah. But I believe your budget document should be available by the end of this week. And so Chris can let us all know when they're ready to be picked up and, and then we'll get it online and stuff. So that'll be your proposed one. I think you've all seen how thick it is. It is a lot of homework. But it's a really great read. You're going to love it. Every page is, is a real page turner. And, and Chris and I are available to help you out with any of that during the meeting or before the meeting.
Excuse me.
I was just wondering, Jen, Abigail, if we can get calendar invites for that?
Oh, sure. Jen can send that out.
Unless, unless that's me. Is anybody else on a calendar invite yet?
No, I appreciate one too. And then just to let folks know ahead of time for the 21st, I will most likely attend in person for the urban renewal, jet home and try and get my kiddos to bed before we recess for the council portion. So just want to let folks know I have time.
In that vein, I'll be attending remotely, remotely, the May 14th meeting with a lovely three-hour time difference on the East Coast. 9:00 PM for me.
Great. My other note is the League of Oregon Cities Conference is this week. It's in North Bend. I will be leaving Wednesday. I, I sit on the city manager board right now, so that's why I'm attending. So if you looked at the conference agenda and you saw things that you think I should pay attention to, or there's a vendor you want me to bring you some swag or something, let me know. But I will be out the rest of this week, available by phone, of course.
You know, there were really cool stickers at the last one. Like, I found one for Paul where it said,
It's a picture of a unicorn, and it says mares are magical.
Awesome stickers, for sure.
I'll keep an eye out for awesome stickers, so. Great, thank you. And then just two, I think fairly quick items. Talked, I think I've talked with all of you about this. One is you've had a couple requests for proclamations, and we don't really have a, a real process for that. So Mayor Blackburn and I were talking, and I gave you kind of two options about how you want to receive those requests, not the proclamations themselves, but when, when we get those, would you like to just delegate to the mayor and I to decide whether those go on the agenda? Would you like me to bring that to you and say, would you like to have that proclamation at a future meeting? Or if you have any other direction on kind of how just operationally you would like that to work?
And this is the moment to discuss this.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, like adding it to the consent agenda, perhaps pulling it off. I know that, you know, someone coming every year to ask for the same sort of thing. But the, the aspect of that that I do like is we get updates, right? And, you know, this, this is, we get to learn about these, you know, different, you know, community organizations that are out there and all that. So, you know, it's, it's part of it, you know, just one pager or something to summarize that would, you know, would be.
For a request for a proclamation?
Yeah, yeah. Versus having them come and, you know, if it got added to the consent agenda, perhaps there's a memo that talks about what, you know, what the ask is and that kind of thing, but also a little bit about the organization and updates, because that, that's usually when they get to provide us, you know, this is what we've been doing for the last year, and like we just heard just now. You know, don't expect them to necessarily come here and, you know, kiss the ring and all that kind of stuff to get everything done, but it would be nice. You know, it's very interesting hearing what they're, what they're doing over the course of the year. Sometimes it's still an opportunity to get to talk to some of these organizations.
Yeah, I'm sure, similar to what Councillor Stupina has said, but I also just appreciate the standardization and creating an actual process for folks, such as the Juneteenth, which we know Anne comes every year. There are other partners that come every year to ask the same. So appreciate some of this criteria to be able to standardize those efforts for folks. And I would be completely okay leaving it to the mayor and the city manager to make those requests.
Thank you. And I'm going to just note that I have two kind of items for you that feel a little bit intermixed, but one is a fee waiver request, and that would be my suggestion, is that we put those on consent agenda unless a group wanted to come and present to that. And then the second was the memo I wrote you just about how a group can get a proclamation on your agenda. If you want the mayor and I to just decide whether to put that on ourselves, or if you want to consider that, and then we'll put those on for a future one.
Anna, and then Amanda.
I know, I'm not opposed to having you and the mayor decide what, what gets on the agenda or consent agenda or our actual presentation, but I think besides just coming to present to us, it is an opportunity to let the community know what's going on and what's coming down the pipeline too. Because there are some people like myself that actively avoid all social media. And so it's, sometimes I hear about things, you know, from, from our meetings that I'm like, I would have no idea that was. So I'm, I really appreciate, you know, it's, I feel like it's not just a presentation to, to us here on city council. It's also a presentation of the community and saying.
That's right. We're streaming worldwide right now. I'm sure we have a huge audience.
Point here, help me with this, Anna, is when, when the person comes, are they saying, hey, would you consider doing a proclamation? Or are they coming and saying, the proclamation that you're doing tonight, and then they tell us about it? Like, that's, that's a real difference in terms of whether they're on the, on the, on the spot to, like, we might say. So when you're imagining that.
I, I, I just like being informed about it, and then I think we can discuss it. And I don't know, I, I don't have strong feelings about that. I think, I think we get to decide, you know, is this something that is beneficial to the greater good of the community? And so are we going to? How good of a proclamation is, but I, but I, I also think it's an opportunity for people to make their case.
I totally agree. But I'm sorry, Amanda.
Sorry. I, I think, okay, for the proclamation part of it, it would be interesting to know what is coming to you guys, like, and, or what you're denying or what. So like, I feel like I.
Yeah.
Couple of times, we got asked from an advocate from Not Hood River to do a proclamation declaring that in the city, it would be Vietnamese Americans' Day on some day. And I got that, and I was like, that doesn't seem like a super, like, big part of our community, like, that's not a constituency, like, where does that end is what it felt like to me. So we, I did not welcome that one, and that did not, I just. I just stick on that one. So that, I did not ask you guys on that. I decided. So that's an example of what I was thinking.
Right. So it'd be kind of cool to like, for me personally, to know that that was a request. And if it was something that I felt really strongly that I can kind of lobby for and be like, but, oh, don't you think blah, blah, blah?
Yeah.
I don't, like, I think email or whatever would be great. I don't know that has been, like, council, um, but would be nice to.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Amanda. That's a great one.
And then the fee waiver thing, I kind of agree, like, well, I mean, I guess it, I like it in a presentation, like even updates, I think it's good for the community, but, I don't know. I can also see them just being like, I don't really want to come and talk to you, but, yeah.
Invite, but not require. Invite, but not require.
But I also think that if they're asking for that and we're considering it, it is nice for them to show up at least on Zoom or something.
Yeah, thanks. I think Gladys.
I like the invite and not require. And then another recommendation was maybe that happens during our one-on-ones. If for whatever reason it can't happen during email of this group wants to do this at a future council meeting, are you all open to it? So that that could take place during that time.
And like our pilot project, this with the streets closure, like, this may not go the way we all want. You guys are like, Paul never tells me anything. Like, if, if, if it's going too autocratic, you can feedback and be like, oh, whoa, 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 let's have a little more inclusive.
That sounds good. And I would note, um, two, a couple other differences I think you're very aware of. Fee waiver generally, because constituency, we're not, you're not basing those on content, right? You're making just a decision. Generally, you're going to approve them, and you see the same ones. You see a lot of the same ones every year. So I could see someone saying, it's a new one, I want to come and present, but, you know, we've asked for this last four years and, and we want to just do it in the consent agenda. Proclamations are a little bit different in that they reflect the voice of council. So those you get to discriminate as to, yes, I want to support this one, no, I don't want to support that one. So that's a, a piece you saw in the memo that I wrote, just some criteria. And I think the one the mayor shared of an example of Vietnamese American Day had, there was a political tinge to that, that I don't recall the exact matter, but I think I replied to them and said, what's the local connection? Do you have someone locally who's wants, will be here to receive it? And then I think they, they never followed up. So I think that's an important piece too, to say, we're not going to just take everything. This is council. Council's time and energy is valuable. Their voice is amplified. And so you really want to be selective about the proclamations that you choose to support.
If anyone wants to add, if you want to, to that conversation, listen to Mark Bailey in the morning. We were on this morning as we are every month. And today is like Blueberry Pie Day and like Kiss Your Partner Day, like, who does these and why do we have to? But anyway, there's, there's a lot out there in the world and being selective, I think is.
Yeah, yeah, exactly right. Those are my comments for you. Thank you.
Any questions for Abigail on this topic? Thanks, you guys.
Uh, let's take a break. Just like four minutes.
All right, we're gonna continue. Uh mayor comments. I don't think I have a. Good. Follow up from a public comment. That's perfect. So uh mayor comments here. We got the blue thing, mayor items. I do not have any items. So whi- which proclamation is that for, Gladys?
Proclamation process. There is a motion on page fifty. Not sure if we need that.
Yeah, I I was thinking about that as well. Thank you, counselor. Um I don't, I feel like what I heard the mayor say was this is, like, let's just try this, and then if it needs to get adjusted, we could adjust that later. So if we're all good with a mayor and I will just kind of bring them forward. I think that's what I heard was we'll bring them forward, but if there are ones that we aren't sure about or ones that we might reject, we would consult with you as well.
Thank you, Gladys, for bringing that up.
Thank you, yeah. I don't, I think at this point, I feel like I got clear direction, a motion not necessary, but someone wanted to make a best line, too.
And because this is a little bit of a new agenda item, follow up on public comment. So we had the comment from uh the folks from sixty-four Tap House. Do we, is there anything further on that topic? I feel like we certainly covered that in the in the streets closure discussion. I was, I was a little surprised on that topic that nobody mentioned Streets Alive. Some of us were here for that.
Yeah.
Not sure how many, but uh that was a significant, like, streets closure programming in line with city values, kind of a concept that had a lot of moving parts, and and that was an interesting discussion, and I just realized, oh, we didn't even talk about that, so. Uh council comments, we will start with Amanda.
Um are we doing committees at the same time?
Sure.
Um as far as library goes, um the annual fundraiser Feast of Wores was this past Saturday. And it was a very fun party at the library, as usual, and um they also had a um dinner, big night, big night out or something like that. Um so from Jen Bayer, the foundation president, she said the spring fundraising season has been very successful, and we are grateful for the community's support. So they've had two really great fundraisers, and they're going to um R F I D all of the library materials, which will make checkout and check-in really fast and update their website, so.
And I saw that Abigail was spotted at the fundraiser.
Um as far as council comments, I just have had multiple people in the past week um mention to me how they watch us on the YouTube, and so I just wanted to give a shout out to that and like, hi, people. Um and it just made me feel good, like people are watching, paying attention, and um so, good job, everybody. Keep it up.
Thanks, Amanda.
Uh no committee reports. Sent requests last time regarding um Region One Act. Um little, little bit of good news on the bridge front. Washington State passed um or appropriated money in their budget, uh additional fifty million dollars to replace the bridge. So Washington State has committed their, the full ask from the Bridge Authority of a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Yay. Um and then on the Oregon State side, um there was a bill uh that unanimously passed the um J T Z, Joint Transportation Committee um to fund a hundred and five million dollars for the new bridge on the Oregon side. So if both of those, well, the Washington side's going through, if Oregon also passes that through or as part of the transportation package, then both states will have stepped up and funded their portion of bridge funding. Yay, so.
Thank you.
Yep. And then personally, um on the side, congratulations to my friend, uh Yulia. She ran a very long distance over the weekend. She won the Banana Slug Backyard Ultra. Yeah, which is with a fifty-four yards. Each yard is four point one six seven miles. Do it every hour on the hour. And so she ran for the two days and six hours straight.
Amazing. Where was that?
Two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five miles. Uh just Shampooey State Park, so. Not far.
Wow.
It's it's, it's a good time. How we spend our weekends.
Grant's comment reminds me that, do we all know that the groundbreaking ceremony has been scheduled for Mariposa? I just learned of it today. Abigail, do you know this?
Yeah, uh we'll send you invites.
Great.
It's scheduled for May thirtieth, and it will be invitation only because uh the the ability to accommodate big crowds is really limited on the site.
May thirtieth.
May thirtieth, I think, at ten A M.
So the Friday after Memorial Day, I think, is correct, in the morning. Okay, sorry, off topic.
Yeah, you will be receiving invites, I promise.
Uh committee-wise, uh the uh Saruda Sister City met just to kind of debrief uh uh after the sort of big, big event of the year, right? So I I was actually not able to attend that one uh for for uh work obligations, but um seemed to be highly procedural in terms of uh, you know, just kind of a debrief and what's, what's, you know, lessons learned from what's uh, what's happened at the last class. I'm not sure if you were attending that. Okay, yeah, so um I'll I'll follow up with Kevin on that as well, but I've seen the email chatter going back and forth, but really just a very successful program, successful event, and you know, they're looking forward to planning for the next one, so that's, starts the cycle again. Um visit, yeah, sure.
So just to add on to that, I just noticed when the cherry blossoms in Saruda Park were just like off the hook, so I quick, like, got down there and took a picture, and Jen helped me like mail that to the mayor, like, hey, mayor, just look at our blossoms. I'm sure you're looking at them on your end. We had the kids. It was great. So just sort of general, like, mayor chumminess occurred this month.
Yeah. Um and the Visit Hood River Board meeting was canceled just because of various illnesses, actually, this time around, so that that'll reconvene. They'll be able to pass their minutes and certain things, uh but yeah, just gonna be shelved for now until the next time uh they meet. Um yeah, and then uh outside of committees, uh one thing that I got to do for the first time that was pretty cool is I got to go to opening day for the Hood River Valley Little League uh this year. Um yeah. Uh it's, I'm I'm a coach pitch manager this year, so um but I, the reason for bringing it up is, you know, just I was really unaware of how many community members are really involved uh and how many city, you know, how, what a city presence we have. You know, the Hood River Police Department was out there in full force, the the Fire Department was out there in full force. You know, uh certain, certain uh city recorders' husbands out there in full force and whatnot, um but yeah, it's just, you know, um just a really awesome thing that's that's growing in the community and, you know, uh yeah, just just very surprised and glad to be able to have children old enough to start doing that kind of stuff and uh, yeah, just uh go Hood River Valley Little League.
And is it centered around our field? Is that where?
So it's, it's, it's kind of all over the place, really, you know, they, the, the main complex is off like Nick's Drive behind the church over there.
Catholic church.
You know, they, they play in Odell and Parkdale, so it's just kind of all over.
All over. Thank you. That's good to know.
Yeah, but it's uh, yeah, really, really cool league.
Fun, enjoy.
Yeah.
Anything else, Doug?
No.
Gladys.
Uh the only committee comment that I have that feels like it's old news now is that uh M C A C was able to secure a lease renewal for another year here in Hood River. It is on our work plan that we are looking for viable options to support M C A C for a year-round shelter, so appreciate that property owner for letting that function for one more year on that piece of property here in town that is a service um that many of our constituents here uh benefit from. The other piece I was going to mention is in May, there is an election coming up for some of the special districts and really encourage a lot of our community members to take the time to get to know who some of these candidates are. Uh we work for you all. We're doing good work uh on your behalf, so please make sure that you're all taking the time to just get to know a couple of those individuals and that in the end, decision-making bodies should be reflective of the community that we all serve. So please continue to look at that and get to know a couple of those individuals who want to step up and serve you better. Um that's everything for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Gladys, because, you know, board commissioners and Parks and Rec commissioners like make decisions that impact our community. And they are on the ballot. Uh Ben.
Uh nothing for me, but I know Kat is uh having budget meetings uh right now, but um nothing from me and committee reports and nothing from me and council comments, really.
Uh nothing for me on council or committee reports, and um I just, I I loved what Doug said about Little League, and I just want to shout out to Hood River Middle School for their production of James and the Giant Peachtree last weekend. Um the program was incredible. The actors did a phenomenal job. It was a musical production, and Mr. Tell and Elam, teacher Elam, are really great. We're so lucky to have um that kind of uh programming for our kids in this community, and it's really amazing. So good job, Hood River Middle School Drama Team.
Woo-hoo. Fun. All right, we've got a couple executive sessions. Shall we all start reading the script? City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two dot six six oh one E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions and O R S one nine two dot six six oh one H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. Council may choose to allow other specific specified persons to attend. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room, and we will end the public broadcast. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made nor final action taken in executive session. The executive session is anticipated to last thirty-five minutes. At the end of the executive session, the city council meeting will be adjourned, and no action will be taken. We will now discontinue.